Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call a meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for a short prayer and a salute to our flag? Almighty God grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all our residents. May the heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our servicemen and women now guarding the gates of freedom. So look to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as in the Lord.
Jessica, a statement of proclamation?
Take notice that this regular agenda meeting of the mayor and borough council being held on this twelfth day of May 2025 has been posted and advertised in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975.
Roll call?
Councilperson's Valba.
Here.
Calisi.
Here.
Novak.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Sonarski.
Here.
Zabrowski.
Here.
Council president, approval of prior minutes?
Yes, Mayor. I mean the following minutes of the mayor and council be approved on roll call notes, subject to correction if necessary, and we have the April 28, 2025 regular and agenda session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson's Roberts.
Yes.
Valba.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sonarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
At this time, Councilman Calisi, who is the liaison to the fire on First Aid, will read an annual proclamation thanking the EMS service.
Being that this is Emergency Medical Services Week, the proclamation for EMS goes as follows: Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the Borough of Saraville extend this as seen their sincere gratitude to all of these heroes who continue to sacrifice for the sake of residents of the Borough of Saraville and the country. Be it further resolved that he, Kennedy O'Brien, mayor of the Borough of Saraville, join the state of New Jersey and the United States of America in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May 18 to the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to accept the proclamation.
Second. Motion made, second and vocal.
Councilperson's Roberts.
Yes.
Valba.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sonarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Okay, if there's nothing for executive, we'll go to all business.
Public hearing has the following ordinance, ordinance number dash 25, Borough of Saraville County Middlesex, ordinance amending residency requirements for firefighters.
Are there any questions on this ordinance? Being no questions, I'll entertain a motion, Councilman Calisi.
I move the public hearing be closed. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson's Calisi.
Yes.
Valba.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Sonarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance number 15 dash 25, and ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration, subsection 2 dash 41, Human Relations Commission of the revised general of the Borough of Saraville.
This time, I'm going to open the public portion for questions or comments.
Thank you, Mayor Jim Robinson Harlan. I do have a couple of questions about this and some comments. You know, the Human Relations Commission came about as a direct result of the New Jersey law against discrimination. And reading from the ordinance, its purpose is to foster, through community effort or otherwise goodwill, cooperation, and conciliation among the groups and elements of the inhabitants of the borough, and is empowered to make recommendations to the Borough Council for the development of policies and procedures in general, and for the programs for formal or informal education that will aid in eliminating all types of discrimination based on race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, age, marital status, gender, sexual orientation, or physical or mental handicaps of any individual, or because of the liability for service in the armed forces of the United States. Originally, in 1992, when this ordinance was enacted, the ordinance called for seven members. In 94, because there was so much interest, so many people in town wanted to participate in this, it was expanded, it was increased to 15. Now, we're going to eight, which is a step backward tonight. And I would just mention that, you know, most boards and commissions have an odd number of people that, you know, you don't run into a problem in case of a tie. But the purpose of this commission is so important, so vital, so necessary to promote understanding, goodwill, conciliation among people and groups in our town. Now, I understand, I've heard anyway, that we couldn't get enough people, that would be eight, to form a corps. So we're lowering the number. And I really wish, instead of lowering the number, you would have worked, you would have worked to get more people involved. Who is the council liaison to this commission?
Council president Roberts.
Council president Roberts, okay. Well, Donna, you're great at social media. Did we do a significant social media?
Questions come through the chair, which is myself. So what are your questions?
Yes.
What is your question?
Through the chair. Okay, Chair.
Mayor.
Did Council President Roberts do a significant social media campaign to let people know that we were looking for more people on this important commission?
The nice thing about these commissions, boards and commissions, is that, as the late, as the former councilman Jeff Polaski once said, government is a living document. So just as we can contract it so that we can have a quorum to do business, we can expand it.
Thank you for that.
That being said, we have advertised it, as we advertise all boards and commissions, for members. Currently, there is a problem with getting members in most of the boards and commissions.
Okay, so we didn't do any extensive advertising that something as important as this, I mean, did we reach out to, through the chair? Did anybody, who is the mayor, or the chair of the committee, Councilwoman Roberts, reach out to churches, or mosques, or temples, or veterans groups, or schools, or others, saying we have this very important committee, and it lacks members? I would just, I'm disappointed that we didn't do that, because, because the purpose of this committee, it's pretty important. And you're right, when Jeff Polaski was a member of the planning board, I told him many times that the master plan was a living document. That doesn't mean that we ought to go, we ought to not try and fill seats on committees, but it was a good, it was a good save. Okay, I'm disappointed, I'm sorry that we couldn't fill these, and I wish we had worked a little bit harder to find members, because, you know, think about what this committee does, and it's so necessary in this town. If you're at the planning board here, you're at the meeting for the mosque here, for the temple a few years ago, you know how important that is. Disappointed, but.
Mayor, can I address the comments for one minute? Go to the, Jim Robinson, I'm sorry.
Jim, good afternoon. I was the liaison last year, we had the same issues last year, and I needed a lot to try to get people reeled in to kind of volunteer for this, and we always had a problem just making a quorum for the meeting. It's the same thing this year, it's not anybody's fault. I did not have social media, I didn't think of that last year, that's a pretty good idea, but last year we had the same issues.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just suggesting that we could have put a little effort into getting people, maybe at the polka, of that Sunday, there would have been, or Saturday, there would have been some people involved. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate that time.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on this ordinance? There being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, Council president.
I move the public hearing be closed. The ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law. Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson's Roberts.
Yes.
Valba.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Yes.
Sonarski.
Yes.
Zabrowski.
Yes.
Public hearing on ordinance number 16 dash 25, calendar year 2025, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
This time, I'll entertain questions or comments on this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that you'll entertain questions and all those comments on this ordinance. You know, exceedingly 2.5% cap is so unusual that the state makes towns pass an ordinance such as this before you can do it. We've all heard you talking about being effectively bribing about all the state grants that we get, but still, we need to exceed the cap. I saw that we just got a $1.6 million grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Fund, and that is to address the same area that there was a referendum to divert money from our open space fund a couple of years ago. And those of us who opposed it said, "Don't take, don't take money from open space, there are grants that are available." No, no grants, we were told, but low and behold, we got $1.6 million grant, but still, we need to exceed the cap. And speaking of grants, the historical side requested a historical designation so that they can apply for grants to fix up the town hall, firehouse. With the exception of Mary and Dan, you refused to do that. Of course, just like with the Weber Avenue, you tell us there are no grants available. So is there money in the budget to restore the firehouse, work that could have been paid for by the grants if it had a historical designation? And is that one of the reasons you need to exceed the cap? Or will you steal money from the open space fund? I see that we got 20 or 23, I'm not sure what the number is, million dollars for selling the dump on Journey Mill Road, but still, we need to exceed the cap. We're told how great, we were told how great the mega warehouse pilots were, that provided so many well-paying union jobs when that pilot was approved, that the pilot would be a real shot in the arm for the town's economy, but still, we need to exceed the cap. By the way, those comments, some of you might remember, were made on April 29th, the day that will always be remembered in Saraville as Dopey A-hole Day. If the mayor didn't need three, four, or five mayoral chiefs of staff because there's a $50,000 increase in that line item, would we need to exceed the cap? Title 4A says that every municipality shall provide for the appointment of a municipal engineer. A, meaning one municipal engineer. For whatever reason, this year, the mayor appointed two municipal engineers. Is that why we need to exceed the cap? And I said, "For whatever reason," I mean, there is a reason we have two engineers. After he got out of prison, the former Republican Ocean County Chair could no longer practice law, so he had his friends set up an engineering firm for his wife, and he used his political power to get municipal jobs, and on January 1st, mayor recommended we hire that firm. So we have two municipal engineers. One based in Saraville, CME, that employs mainly Saraville residents, knows the town better than anyone, and one from Ocean County that the mayor appointed as a political favor. Is the political favor that mayor gave to the former Ocean County Republican Chair one of the reasons we need to exceed the budget cap? The school board litigation over the bus depot is ending, no thanks to the mayor, so that should eliminate some costs, but we still need to exceed the cap. Trash collection for all the new apartments is now up to $700,000. Is that one of the reasons we need to exceed the cap? School crossing guards are down $90,000? With all the new traffic, funds for the people who help ensure our kids' safety, school crossing guards is cut. By the way, speaking of the police, the police had to bring in an officer on overtime tonight so that one could be at this meeting. Is that why we have to exceed the cap? So that seniors can't commit insurrections at council meetings? Officers on overtime to come to council meetings? If we had something to show for it, I'd say, "Fine." If we had a DPW garage, a new community center, a facility for seniors, something to show for it, but what do we have to show? We have a dump at Bailey Park, and we have mega warehouses. You don't need to exceed the cap, you need to do a better job management. Senior citizens on fixed incomes, young families just starting out, people have real jobs that they need to show up for, can't afford this, and by the way, you see, you cut this office on aging budget, $50,000. That's really a nice thing to do to seniors.
Chair, it's five minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. The border medication increase was less than 2%, but you're going to be at 3.5. I stand up, I suggest you stand up for the taxpayers and vote no on exceeding the cap.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your time. Oh, by the way, I asked some questions. Will there be answers?
Let's hope so.
I'm sorry?
We'll, we'll work on them.
There are no answers to my questions tonight before you pass this ordinance? Will there be answers to the questions I ask? Mayor, when you started, you said there are questions and comments.
You asked questions, and then you kept talking. So somebody who should get back to you.
You know when that will be?
Let my office know.
You don't know when that will be?
Well, I hope this coming week.
Thank you.
Are there any other?
Ken Olshusky, Saraville. In the interest of time, I would just like to say, most, most of the comments that Mr. Roberts made, I certainly agree with, and I think we need answers to, and I think exceeding the cap is just an excuse for bad government. But I'd like to look at one of the specifics on this that was just mentioned, and that's the mayoral aids. I believe we have three mayoral aids. I said, "I believe," I don't know, because we have a secret government for the first time in the history of the borough where you don't answer questions. So nobody really knows what goes on, and they probably, this is by design, so a lot of things you don't want us to know, which leads us to believe that a lot of the things are probably corrupt. But let's look at this mayoral aid then. The reason the mayor gave that, oh, he had 6,000 messages when he came back to office. Oh, really? 6,000 messages? I'm sure 80 or 90% of them, if there were 6,000, or 600, or 60,000, or 600,000, I'm sure most of them were spent, but, in Trumpville, but, okay, of those messages, my question is, where are the people? Where are the people that left those messages, that came to the council meetings and said, "I have a question on the mayor's lawn, I haven't got an answer"? Anybody have an answer to that?
What is the question?
Because this, the question is, where are the people that left those messages over the years, apparently the four years you were con mayor and didn't get an answer? Nobody showed up. So I guess that means that they were really important. I guess that means they were true, that a lot of people left messages. Yeah, I believe in standing for your money too.
Are you saying that everyone in the borough is lying to you, Ken?
What I'm saying, what I'm saying, it's, it's, it's not a valid reason, no, what I'm saying, Mayor, it's not a valid reason for hiding secrets.
You're saying this is lying to you, one of the most honored veterans in Saraville?
Who is lying? Who is lying? With hands here, Mayor.
Who are lying to you? You're saying this is a phantom's number? That's what you're saying? People lie to you?
I'm saying that it's not real, because where are they?
Then you're saying they're lying.
Where are they? Where comes that?
We're just wanting that for the record.
Well, let's, let's, so, no, I'm saying that you're lying to me, Mayor. No, not that, I don't know who you're talking to, I came in here, you first see who's here there.
So what you're saying is the most honorable people in the borough didn't reply to me?
I'm saying you, if you consider yourself the most honorable person. I don't want to take my time, no, no, let's not play that game, let's not take up my time. I want to ask you why we need mayoral aids. That's the, that's the question. Why, you know, you know who's responsible for day-to-day activities at Borough there? The guy sitting to your right, the business administrator. That's why he's been hired, and that's why he pays, we pay. And you know why? He has a bunch of people in this town that he can rely on. They're called department heads, and they're people like Gavin, and Kirk Meck, and Jen, right here in the senior center, Chief Bluewater, Jessica and Nicole here. They're the people that the business administrator uses for that. I'm saying that I'm putting, I'm saying that you putting mayoral aids in is patriotism, Mayor. That's what I'm telling you, and we're paying for it in the budget, and that's exceeding the cap. So if you didn't understand that, that's in plain language. You're putting patriots in there. You can't, no reason, no reason to do that, Mayor, because you have adequate staff, this guy has adequate staff. Unless you're going to leave your patriotism job in Trent and run the borough, then you have aids and get rid of the VA, oh, that would be fine, but that's the real problem. And these department heads, I've worked with all of them, they've done a fantastic job, and one's sitting right here in front of you, I especially would like to say, and Nicole, she gets back to me all the time, they all do, I can't say any of them, I especially single her out. So that's the kind of stuff that makes this budget exceed cap, there's, I'm only singling one thing up, I don't know this stuff, because of course, who knows, all the patriots, patriots that sit in there, but this one is obvious, anyone, a child could find that one, Mayor. So that's the real problem there, and I'm not only singling you out, I'm singling out your people here, Mayor.
Thank you, Chair, it's five minutes.
Okay, yeah, I'm singling out your people.
Thank you, Chair, it's five minutes.
You took up half my time, Mayor, that's not the game you're playing, you took up half my time, it's your time, but these people here, the councilmen sitting here in your puppets, are just as responsible for saying, "Stand here, do nothing, and allow that to happen." That's a game, and by the way, many people come to this microphone, you give them much more time, Mayor, because I watch it on YouTube and I see, it's more fake info. Thank you.
Would you mind having Helen come take you home?
You can, you can have anybody you want come, Mayor, that's the kind of game you play. You usually run the police up, you're the only mayor who's ever done it in history in a borough. Thank you, Mayor, that's the scam.
Hi, my name is Tom Fritz, 143 Main Street. I've been for the council a lot of times, with a couple of questions, I noticed during the budget, listen.
Tom, this part of the meeting is just about the budget.
Yes.
There'll be other times which you can ask questions on any and all things.
Right, I'm asking a question about the budget. Because I noticed there's an increase in the police budget, and also the dispatcher budget, and there's a decrease in the crossing guard budget. My question is, is the increase to the budget going to get us more traffic police into more traffic? Because I've talked to the sergeant of traffic, and there is a really serious speed problem throughout town, especially on Main Street. I've asked him the speed limit to be lowered, but he can't. So I, and I.
I want to answer that for you, Tom.
Yeah, I just, we're complete with your thought, yeah. Yeah, I live on Main Street, every night,下午11 o'clock, 12 o'clock in the morning, I have cars zipping down Main Street in a very tight space. I had talked to the sergeant of traffic, and one of the things that he was saying to me is that they need more money for traffic. One of the things, I've witnessed tons of accidents down in front of my house. One so accident that a car hit a pickup truck so hard, it flipped the pickup truck. So you got to know how fast this car was going to get that to happen. I just want to make sure that we're going to look at the police budget smartly, and let's make the streets a little bit more safer, safer.
Okay, I can, I can share with you that recently, in the last two or three months, the police chief combined two units together to create, so our traffic unit traditionally, in the many years that I worked there, had three bodies in it. Over the last several years, we had another bureau evolve community policing, which is very active and out there, but it was determined that there was enough time in their day that we could be redirecting them to traffic enforcement. That has begun. We hope that you'll see some positive results. If you have issues, I recommend that you continue your dialogue with Sergeant Braille, they can do some directed patrol. I could also tell you that the redevelopment agency is looking comprehensively at the downtown areas specifically with regard to pedestrian safety and traffic controls. There's been discussions with the county to lower the speed limit in that stretch of road, so steps are being taken. Unfortunately, things don't happen in a day or a week, but we're in those discussions, we're hoping to make some progress in that.
I know when I first came up to the board about this situation, I was told that the speed limit on Main Street can't change because it's a borough, it's a county road.
It, well, we can't change it, we can petition the county to do that, and.
I don't care what the speed limit is, has to be enforced. If you were to lower it to 35, or lower it to 25, it's not going to make a difference as far as I'm concerned.
Understood.
The only thing that would make a difference, and I don't want this to happen, is with speed bumps.
Enforcement determines are the keys. Speed bumps are something that, in the experts in traffic, which I am not, indicate that they actually cause more accidents than they prevent, but more enforcement is certainly in order, and we'll have that discussion with the chief and make sure that you see some more visible presence down there, particularly if you have any times of day where it's happening with any kind of repetitive nature.
I work from home, I can tell you, all day.
All day.
In fact, I've also called the police department a couple of times the past couple of weeks because somebody at 2:00 in the morning ripped past my house, went into the Saraville, went into the parking lot of the town hall, did a couple of donuts, and then ripped past my house to the other, and it's just, it's, it's out of control.
All right, we'll have that discussion with the chief tomorrow, hopefully.
I can deal with popping an electric in this stuff, but the speed is what scares me.
Understood.
It's also funny that Journey Mill is, or not Journey Mill, um.
MacArthur.
MacArthur's 25 miles per hour, there's nobody there, because all the houses, unfortunately. And Main Street has got, this area was populated, and it's 35, so it's kind of weird.
We'll work on it, we're working on it.
Yes. But.
30 years, they've been working on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly, now Kelly, a member of, he's been.
All my friends.
I mean, I've been here, I've been living on that, in that spot for 20 years now. Just recently, I would say over the past 10 years, it's gotten severe worse, so, and I know the population of Saraville has increased, and that's the reason why I'm thinking it's bursting in it, but I just want to make sure that the police budget is being allocated in the proper directions.
Thanks, Tom. Are there any other questions or comments on the budget? Being no other questions on the budget, I'll entertain a motion, Councilman Valba.
I move the public hearing close. The ordinance adopted on second, final reading, and advertised according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson's Valba.
Yes.
Calisi.
Yes.
Novak.
Um, I'm going to vote no, only because.
Um, I'm gonna vote no, only because when we introduced it at the last meeting, it was my understanding, we have always done this ordinance every year, because we, what we don't use, we can bank. And as far back as when Wayne was CFO, we were doing this every year. And it was my understanding that we actually weren't using it. This was just a precautionary. But I found out tonight that we are in fact using some of it. So I'm gonna vote no on it.
Roberts?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, this time, I'm gonna open the public portion on resolutions.
Um, before you go there, Mayor, I do have an appointment.
Ah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So tonight, I would like to appoint Ron Green for the five-year member of the Housing Authority. I make a motion to appoint.
Is there a second? Second.
Oh, sorry.
Roll call?
I heard Ron Green to ask for a house. Okay.
Motion made, the second is roll call.
Councilperson Roberts?
Yes.
Balda?
Yes.
Calisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Anything else, Councilperson?
No, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. With that, I'll open the public portion for questions or comments on resolutions. Are there any questions or comments? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion, Councilman Bell.
I move the public hearing closed, and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilperson Roberts?
Yes.
Balda?
25106. You have seen on the Adalex? Yes, and all their votes.
Calisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
I need a motion to accept the correspondence.
I make a motion to accept the correspondence as listed. Thank you.
Roll call?
Councilperson Roberts?
Yes.
Balda?
Yes.
Calisi?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Zabrowski?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor, uh, Mayor and Council report to Administration and Finance, Councilman Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone who is, I'm sorry. Everyone is working hard to reduce the budget and minimize the tax increase, and we will have amendment to the budget after next meeting. Uh, that, progress.
Uh, planning and zoning, Councilman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. First of all, ladies, Happy Mother's Day to, uh, to all mothers that are here. And the deus, also those in our community, your grandmas, moms, aunts, nieces, and all those who care for others. The planning board, just an update, that last Wednesday, the planning board met on the application for the mosque. Uh, the, both the applicant and the citizens rested. The next meeting for the mosque, which will be a vote, will be June 4th. Um, I just have two questions. One is a follow-up to, um, to Justin. About a month ago, I had asked about the construction equipment and the construction, um, center, the cement barriers and stuff, uh, which was under the Borden Town Avenue Bridge over the Route 9. Do you have an update on the status of that?
Yes, we spoke with the DOT, and they're expected to be out there by the end of June.
Thank you. And one other question. We received a complaint by a resident who lives on Kenneth Avenue. Uh, it sounds to me it was a request, and we've all known that that intersection of Berlou, Borden Town and Kenneth is, is a very difficult intersection. I do know that the NJDOT was, had been planning on a complete rehabilitation of that area. Jay, is there an update on that, the status of all?
There's not an update. They had, I think, an information presentation to the residents of the area. They were going to review comments, but I haven't heard anything as far as scheduling any plans for future improvements.
If you don't mind, if I gave you that citizen's information, would you be able to at least point them in the right direction for them to be able to put those comments out to the NJDOT? Uh, other than, Mayor, progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Councilman Calisi.
Okay, so we did the proclamation for emergency services, which is very nice. Thank you for your service. And, um, my next report from Office of Emergency Management, from Director Chris Bartley, uh, that's progress. And, um, the next, um, update is from the Fire Department, from Chief George Gavin. Uh, also progress. So, um, but thank you, George, for your, it's also Public Works Week. So thank you for your service and that and everything that you do. Uh, the next and final report is from Chief Plomacher from the police. So this week marks the beginning of National Police Week. So it's a time to honor the courageous men and women who dedicate their lives to protecting our communities. Designated in 1962 by President John F. Kennedy, this week serves as a national recognition of law enforcement professionals across the country, culminating in Peace Officers Memorial Day on May 15th. On this day, we pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. Saraville Police recently held their annual police memorial service, where our community came together to remember and honor fallen officers. This solemn occasion is more than just tradition. It's a reflection of gratitude and respect for those who have served and those who continue to stand in defense of public safety. I want to add that prior to the ceremony, I had the honor to attend an award ceremony, which began with a message from Chief Plomacher to the men and women of the department. The Saraville PBA President Patrol Michael Krasniewski, along with other officers, presented and recognized acts of exceptional service and dedication, which included a message of support and wellness from Dr. Julie Trappiano, who's the department's wellness coordinator. Additionally, I had the privilege of attending our PBA retirement day, recognizing officers whose dedication has shaped the department and strengthened our town. These moments remind us that police work is not just a profession. It's a calling that demands courage, commitment, and an unwavering dedication to service. Beyond honoring our officers, we must also ensure they have the resources needed to maintain their physical, mental, and emotional well-being. The Saraville PTA recently launched an important wellness initiative, providing officers and their families with 24/7 access to the Cortico app. Law enforcement has traditionally carried a push-through mindset when facing stress and trauma. But we now recognize that this approach is no longer sustainable. Mental health and resilience is crucial to a long, successful career in policing. Through the partnership with Lexipol and Cortico app, officials confidential, offers confidential personalized support, daily wellness tools, and a one-click crisis assistance feature, ensuring that our officers have the help they need when they need it. By encouraging a proactive approach to wellness, this initiative strengthens job satisfaction, career longevity, and overall well-being with the department. In addition to my report, I would like to add that public safety is rooted in community and Operation Snow Home, which was hosted by Saraville Historical Society on May 3rd, beautifully demonstrating this connection between our town's history and included law enforcement. The special event showcased letters written by Saraville service members during World War II, offering insight into the experiences of young men and women who bravely served our nation. Some of these letters were read aloud by guest speakers, bringing history to life in a deeply meaningful way. I want to acknowledge Patrolman Tom Calisi, a US Army veteran and Saraville police officer, who had the honor of reading a letter written by Raymond Sweeney, a young service member who later became Saraville's third Chief of Police in 1963. It was a powerful moment, an opportunity for the police department to pay tribute to one of their own and recognize the lasting legacy of service within Saraville. In closing, National Police Week is more than a commemoration. It's a reminder of sacrifices made, the service given, and the commitment we owe to those who protect us. And through our memorial service, our mental health initiatives, and events like Operation Snow Home, we reaffirm our promise to build stronger, safer, and more connected Saraville. To our officers and community members, and to all who support public safety, I extend my sincerest gratitude. Your dedication makes all the difference. Thank you for your service. That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Public Works, Councilwoman Novak?
Thank you, Mayor. Almost everything that goes on in this town, whether it be the fishing derby, which was absolutely spectacular, and God had a hand in the beautiful weather, or the police memorial, which was a very moving ceremony. Ray Krasniewski and I have been attending that. We haven't missed a year since, I think it was 1996. But every single thing that happens in this town, at one point or another, touches Public Works, which I'm in charge of. Whether it's the road department or the parks department, they go above and beyond with every single, whether it's an event, or it's cleaning up a park, or whatever, they have a hand in everything. And I know Chief Plomacher did thank the parks department for the wonderful work they did, you know, making sure everything was clean. And I'd just like to say, whenever you see a Public Works guy, no matter what they're doing, tell them they're doing a good job, because they really are, they have a hand in absolutely everything we do this year. I wish the fish were biting a little more. I understand that if we have this in the evening, you're gonna have more fish biting. I don't know that much, but the evening before, there was a lot more fish being caught in the pond than there was the day of the thing. Also, I'd like to thank EMS, as many of you know. That's something that's very close to my heart. I was a, an EMT since I was 15. Well, excuse me, I was a first aid since I was 15. I was 21 when I became an EMT. And it's been over 50 years. And being a volunteer, being an EMT is, the training is astronomical. But being a volunteer doing it is, is really a labor of love. Nobody does that for, you know, there's no paycheck, there's no reward other than knowing that we helped somebody. Even if, I remember a couple of times I was on the ambulance with Glenn, and the favorite thing was people would ask me to say a prayer with them, right? Glenn, you said, "How do people know?" No matter what it is you do for somebody like that, it's really, these EMTs, they put in so much more training than I had to do back in the early days. So it, it really is a labor of love, and everybody really should thank our volunteers in this town, whether it's first aid or fire. They do an exemplary job, and it's all from here. Now I'm gonna deviate from my Public Works for a minute. About six weeks ago, I made a motion that because of all the complaints about the range, that we should see something about, I said, to have the engineers look and see what we can do as a sound barrier. I mean, there was some tall planting trees, burns, and stuff like that. I understand from the business administrator that the engineer had decided that we really, trees just weren't gonna do it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we're looking at $180,000 for a soundproofing wall. Now, since then, I've also learned that the complaints seem to be centered when the, not the public, I mean Port Authority that actually pays to use our range, but the state police, who we let them use it as a favor. They do not use suppressors on their weapons. We're a Saraville police, and Port Authority uses suppressors, which makes it a lot quieter. Port Authority has been there every day with absolutely no complaints. But I still think that the soundproofing wall is needed. And I would like the council to agree to let the business administrator and the chief of police or whoever in the department, one of the captains, works with Port Authority, um, finding out if, because they made, Port Authority is already paying between $350,000 and $400,000 for the use of that range. I'd be sad to see that disappear. And I also understand that they would be willing to pay a substantial amount towards that wall, which is gonna help us all, because even if it's not loud enough for people to call and complain, it's still, it's like people in moral part must hear it, even with the suppressors. So I really would like to invest in this wall. It would help everybody, and then we can also put some trees around it, because we have all that money in shade tree to make it look pretty. And I'd like the council to authorize the business administrator to work with Port Authority. They, they would like a more permanent contract, and they'd be perhaps willing to pay for some, if not all, of this wall. So I'm not saying we have to do anything, but I'd really like to authorize them to start doing that, because it would benefit all residents in town. I can hear the firing when it's the state police. Mayor, I believe, oh, one other thing. I do this once a month, and I know it's not going anywhere, but I would really like to make a motion that we give historical, this, uh...
What's the motion?
The, to designate Yule Firehouse as historical property in the borough of Saraville.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Motion made, the second is roll call.
Councilperson Novak?
Yes.
Balda?
Yes.
Calisi?
Not yet.
Roberts?
No.
Zabrowski?
No.
Zabrowski?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I just wanted to know, I, I didn't hear any kind of response from the council. I'd like to hear something. Do we authorize the business administrator to work on that? Have Port Authority pay for part of that wall to benefit all the residents in town?
I, I didn't hear what you said.
About the wall and the range.
I'm asking that the council authorize the business administrator to work with the police department.
All right, why don't you just have Glenn look into it?
Well, yeah, but the council has to authorize him to, to work out some kind of deal, because it's my understanding that that deal was pulled off the table entirely.
Give me the microphone. Glenn, you have it. Hey, for what you're saying, these are not great microphones. What is it you want Glenn to do?
I just want him to work with the police to set up a permanent contract with the Port Authority and work with them to pay for part of this wall, as well as the fees that they're paying for the use of the range, because it's gonna benefit us all, every resident in the town.
Okay. I, I don't think it's possible, because we, we have, we're not voting to re, reauthorize the MOU.
Well, that's what I'm asking for him to do then.
You want, what, what is, are you, are you looking to make a motion, Mayor?
Uh, if it's necessary, yes. I make a motion that we authorize the business administrator to work on an MOU, uh, and include in that not only the cost of the, uh, what they pay to use the range, but also pay for a part, if not all, of the soundproofing for that range.
What's, what's the motion?
The motion is to authorize me to move forward with engaging with the Port Authority to see what kind of deal we can strike, not only for the fees for the use of the range, but also for them to play a proportional share of the cost of a soundproofing wall.
That's the motion, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Being no second, the motion doesn't move forward. Anything else, Mayor?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Water, Sewer, and Environmental, Councilman Zabrowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the first thing I want to bring up on the water department, I just want to remind all residents that the water level in the aquifers in DuHart Lake are all low. Uh, we're not in any kind of drought situation, but if we continue to go at this level, we are gonna go into a drought. The water department produced 175 million gallons of water last month in April, and that's like up 20% one month from what it was the previous month. Uh, their fire hydrant flushing is complete. That's all done, it's all scheduled. Uh, they're continuing all their pump station maintenance. I went on all tours, I told you of the pump stations and everything else. I'm very happy and pleased the way everything is running in the water sewer. They have their standard amount of breakdowns, water plumes, sewer plumes, and a lot of them aren't our problem, it's residential problems. So that's moving forward with that. Uh, the second thing is the community garden. The community garden was opened April 26th. Uh, on May 10th, they just received a delivery of mushroom, uh, con... the delivery of mushroom compost. They're adding that to all of their beds. There's 41 available beds that are filled up and have been assigned. There's a waiting list right now. There's some more beds that the borough has to build. We have a couple that aren't paid yet, but most of the beds are full. They're moving forward there. I was actually in there Saturday, and I looked at everything. There's some people that do have stuff planted already, but they're moving forward. The next thing I want to bring up is, I'd like to amend the ordinance 83-3. It's for the mobile P1 food vendors. Right now, there's only two mobile vendors in the town. We have one on Boardtown Avenue. We have Bear's Hot Dog. You had another one on Lower Main Street. By the quick check? P2. Okay, I'm sorry. So there's, we need, I think there's a condition, but just a few more would be all right to put on. I would have asked for two, possibly three more to be added. Then let's give us a total of four or five. There's two on there right now. So that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Okay. Anything else, Councilman?
No, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Recreation, Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. First, Mary, thank you for your services as an EMT. On this, this day, we recognize you. I do have quite a few things to mention. There are unfortunately too many examples of how neglected some of our most precious natural resources were in past administrations. And I'm proud of how this administration has recognized the need and is actively working to finally take care of our properties and natural resources. So the first is the $1.57 million grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation's National Posture Resiliency Fund to complete the engineering design for restoring 188 acres of South River wetland ecosystem and habitat. We're handling the priority of flood and habitat before moving towards passive renovation, which we'll continue with. We're also finalizing a $3 million plan to renovate Bailey's Park. It may be, things may be in disarray, but this is a group of problem solvers here. We have a plan funded through Green Acres and other funding. So we've started with $975,000 in Green Acres to support enhancement at Bailey's Park, as well as $750,000 in state money under Jake's law to have playgrounds for all accessibility levels. We also have the construction of six new pickleball courts behind Veterans Park with a walkway improvement slated for upcoming months. It's nice that this is moving particularly quickly, because pickleball is in high demand. And I was given the Polish for pickleball. I'll give it a shot. Arkie duka. So if I'm wrong, I'm sure my Polish cohorts will let me know. We've also received grants to widen walkways and improve bathrooms in Kennedy Park. Bathrooms are near complete, and we'll start pathways soon. And Jay, I'd like to ask you just for a short update on that particular project, please. Mayor, if that's all right?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The Kennedy Park Walkway Project, the plans have been prepared, and they've been submitted to Green Acres for review. So we're waiting for their comments before we can proceed with bidding that project.
Thank you, Jay. Also, Mayor, these are some of the things that you have handled in your newsletter, but it's just so important. I want to reiterate that we are eliminating registration fees and uniform costs for children who want to participate in municipal run sports leagues. And this perk, just so you know, is only available for the local programs in Sarawak, and it's not for travel programs. This is really a great example of how we can provide services for our residents without raising taxes and having funding, potentially through public-private partnerships. And I will take grants every day and twice on Sunday, but we still have the responsibility to manage and maintain all of our resources and not let them fall in disrepair as they did for so many years. And I don't recall ever saying that we didn't have opportunities for grants in any of these areas, but there is other maintenance that we have to address. Now, having said that, in addition to the large-scale projects and ongoing maintenance of parks that we, and we plan to upgrade or approve two to three neighborhood parks annually. And our parks professionals, as Mary has said many times, are doing a great job on all of these, including our large-scale projects. Tuesday, we have opening bids for the US complex. This has been a pipeline, in the pipeline for five to six years. We've been accumulating funds gradually by grants. The price has gone up. And we are now able to move forward and start awarding the contract. And we will be seeing state-of-the-art baseball field and a multi-purpose field. And once again, Mayor, if you would indulge me, I'd like to ask Jay to give us an update on the firehouse.
By all means.
Thank you.
At the present time, our office is finalizing the plans for the environmental cleanup of the firehouse. We're expecting to have those completed this week. We're gonna then send them over to the architect for his review, just to make sure proper coordination. And with regard to the building itself, the architect is currently finalizing the concept plan for the layout of the building.
Thank you, Jay. And just a couple of other things to wrap things up. As we've moved the garden to its forever home, and it's now open, it's really a beautiful backdrop for the very popular farmer's market that takes place on Thursdays. This past week was both the police retirement dinner and the annual police memorial ceremony, which was very well attended. We also have the Junior Police Academy signup, and this is a great program. I've had the privilege to attend the graduation ceremony. It's amazing to watch the young boys turn into real leaders. Councilman Sinarski and I attended Mrs. Ferrari's History of New Jersey class. And I want to thank Mrs. Ferrari for that opportunity. The students and youth of this town are really engaged and very open-minded, and I'm very grateful for that. The fishing derby was a wonderful recreation of police partnership. It was a beautiful day out, if you were there. Attendance was amazing. It was the highest since pre-COVID, with a total of 126 participants. Prizes were awarded, and there's always a special thank you for Officer Fisher. Also, on that same day, there was a community cleanup. OLV and the high school academic competition team were both there. And from the previous cleanup, you may be able to see that there was a, two of our students that are the stallions in track and field were able to rescue a fish out of a plastic bag. So that was an actual, real-world example of how we have to maintain our fire and keep our parks clean. We also have our Memorial Day Parade on May 26th. And immediately after that, the VFW, Post 4699, our local VFW, which is located on our Journeyville Road, is hosting a family event designed to get our community involved in a memorable day out and support the VFW and our local heroes. We have Independence Day on June 28th at Kennedy Park. And just to wrap up, I do have follow-ups with the mayor's office on some community questions and requests. And when I get answers to those, the requesters will get those first, and we may share them in a future meeting. Lots of progress, Mayor.
Thank you, Council President.
Yes.
With that, we'll go to the general discussion items. Stephen, Eric, I still have one more thing.
Sure. One more thing I'd like to address. Sunday, we had the BIC Sarawak Brain Injury Children Fishing Tournament at Kennedy Park. Also, we had over 40 participants, and there were smiles and kids that had fun all day. I want to thank all the volunteers for Sarawak BIC. I want to thank the Knights of Columbus guys that were there with me. Also, Sarawak police showed up, and I want to thank them for coming. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sash. And thank you for all you do for the special children in our town.
Thank you, Mayor.
And with that, we'll go to the general discussion items. Administration, Finance?
Application for social therapy receipt from St. Stanslos Kosta RC Church to serve beer and wine at the annual parish carnival on June 19th to the 21st from 4:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m.
Any objections? Next item?
Application for a place-to-place transfer receipt from MeruLo 3, which is a pocket license, and to place it at 777 Washington Road at the Pizza Heaven. And also, the application for waiver of compliance with ordinance 6-5.8 to locate 2,000 feet of another plenary retail license premise.
Did this go through PD?
I don't think I got a response yet, but I'll get a response before then.
You have to hold until we get a response.
Yeah, until the response is out. Thank you, good old PD.
Anything else?
One more thing. Authorization to improve change order number one for AC shultings for the General Law Maintenance and redevelopment services, which increases the contract amount from $722,350 to $894,667, which represents a net increase of $172,317.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Business administrators report?
Just two quick things, Mayor. Number one, there'll be an upcoming hearing, a public information session by the Army Corps of Engineers explaining their project to search for and locate any unexploded ordinance from legal SP explosion that was around the World War I era. There'll be no disturbance to anybody's property, no digging. They're gonna employ ground-penetrating radar. Anybody living in the affected area is encouraged to tune into that or to show up to the meeting. There'll be two sessions. I don't recall the date, but they are posted. And the second thing, I was asked by our recycling coordinator to remind everybody that shortly, we'll be under the new contract with the county for recycling. They'll be rolling out 90-gallon cans for recycling, which are very similar to our green cans that we use for trash. That's part of the program. One will be provided to every household in the borough. And more information on that will be forthcoming. Yeah, it is mixed recycling. Everything goes into the 190-gallon bucket. There's no need to pre-sort it other than what you normally do with your recycling.
Okay, CFO's report?
Thank you, Mayor. Progress.
Okay. Borough Engineers report?
Thank you, Mayor. Two items this evening. The first is the New Jersey Transportation Trust Fund. They're accepting application for grant applications for road improvements. Last year, we paid approximately $400,000 for Johnson's Lane. Looking for authorization to prepare an application, and we'll review possible roadways with the Public Works Director and your administrator. And the second item is the MCUA is looking to do repairs to their watering facility. Because the project is located in Sarawak, the DEP requires a resolution for the town supporting the project so they can submit their application. So we're looking for that resolution. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Borough Attorney's report?
I have nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you. This time, I'm gonna open the public portion for question and comments on annual things. Jim?
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, I want to thank you so graciously letting the other two speakers succeed in time. It was very kind of you even answering some questions. Councilwoman Novak, I'd like to thank you for your suggestion on the wall. Those gunshots can be heard all over town, and it is annoying. I'm sorry that nobody else saw fit to second that motion. Perhaps if you had suggested Mexico pay for the wall, the Republicans would have liked the idea. Maybe, maybe, maybe next year, there will be somebody up there that can second motions for you, especially like that. I want to talk a second about the Bailey Park dump. That's the facility on Cheeseblade Road where we've allowed a contractor to dispose of God knows what there. It's a disgrace originally when this was approved. I questioned it. I asked the mayor, and we were told they were going to store a quick rig there, pipes and things like that. Now, it's an illegal dump site. April 11th, the business, I wrote to the business administrator early April. And then again, April 11th, he told me that they would be out of there in about a month. Well, yesterday was the month. They are still there. This is an illegal dump. It violates state law and Green Acres regulations. I saw a press release was put up the other day talking about how popular that park is. Perhaps it's, perhaps it's popular with contractors looking to dump coil-stained macadam, but certainly isn't popular with the public. And are we going to do an environmental impact report before the contractor or immediately after the contractor leaves there? That's a question.
Go ahead.
Please pause my time.
There's no recalling your time. Have you passed the mic down?
Okay. And then I can tell you this. I can tell you this. We talked about the grant. The state won't release the grant fund. You won't get a dime of money for that project unless this is cleaned up unless this is cleaned up and unless we know that the area is clean. Have they posted a bond? That's another question, but since, since it counts to my time, you can please answer that at the end. And has everybody gone down there and seen what that looks like? Has everybody gone down there? Mayor, have you been down there and seen what that looks like? You proud of that? Okay. By the way, with that gas revitalization problem in Oregon, are they gonna do a curb-to-curb replacement on the macadam? That's a question. And you know, about a month or two ago, I got a call from somebody saying we were making progress on this school bus debacle. I was very happy, especially one of the areas that I had first suggested. Now I'm hearing that there are issues over who gets the political credit for it. Come on, let's resolve this. Don't care about who gets the political credit for it. Please, resolve this school bus debacle issue for the people. By the way, I mentioned before that there was an officer on overtime. I couldn't see that there were two officers here. I didn't mean to slight one of the officers. There are two officers. Three officers were called in on overtime. I guess it's a result of Captain Castle, Castlebrand's directive saying that no matter what else is going on in town, there better be officers at the council meeting. I'd like to know, who asked him to send that? I feel like Ross Paraka here sometimes, with the amount of police that are here at meetings to prevent senior citizens from doing God knows what. Over the weekend, three different people asked me where they could find the budget on the website. It's there, but you have to search for it. In fact, I had to call somebody to find it. I would suggest that since there's an interest in that, and since it's so important, and since it's so late, latest in the borough's history, and since we're exceeding the cap, that you make that easy to find. Put it right on the front page. Maybe over by Conversations with Kennedy or something, so it's easy for people to find. And, you know, some council people, especially this year, are posting more about borough business under their title, Councilwoman, for instance. Deleting comments or turning off comments. I've been contacted by somebody who wants to initiate litigation. There's a First Amendment group that knew this pro bono. And I'm not involved with this. I was contacted. I'm not pushing this, but I want people to know, they should seek some advice on deleting comments or turning off comments on social media posts about borough activities, especially when they use their official title. Is my time up? Okay. Should I get back to my seat to wait for the answers, or?
Somebody will get back to you.
Well, how about now? Answer the other gentleman's question. I'd like to know the answer to my questions, Mayor. If you're not capable of answering, the ordinance says the administrator is supposed to answer questions at the council meeting. I'd like the administrator to answer the questions I've asked about the dump at Bailey Park and the gas revitalization problem, and whether or not that is gonna be cleaned up. Mayor, I know you don't know the answer to these questions, but the administrator should. Mr. Spartinski, the ordinance says you're supposed to answer questions at the meetings. Would you please do that?
Come on.
Would you please answer those questions?
Take your seat, Jim. Take your seat. Take your seat.
Will somebody please answer my questions? The people are entitled to answer, Mayor.
Take your seat.
You know, that Bailey Park isn't the only thing that's a disgrace in this town. A governing body that won't answer questions is a disgrace in this town. A disgrace. And I hope you're proud.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
As regards Bailey Park, that site use was negotiated probably three years ago under another administration. I'm sorry, I'm giving you an answer. I didn't interrupt you. Please give me the same courtesy.
I was correcting you, not interrupting.
Well, you're incorrect again, and I'll continue to explain why. So that was under a previous administration. We became aware of it. The work was ongoing. In order to expedite the completion of the work, we let it continue as it wasn't getting out of hand. It then became out of hand. We were contacted by the DEP, and the DEP's only question was when would the material be removed and where the material was going. They were furnished with that answer this week. Moving forward, we were advised that we can continue moving forward if the need arises to store materials like that on Green Acres property. However, in advance of that, we have to get a temporary waiver from DEP, which they will gladly provide to us. And with regard to the environmental study, I will discuss that with Jay as we further develop plans to go operation along the Bailey Park project. There is no interruption in the disbursement funds from Green Acres as a result of that material being present in the park.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Oldtrusty, Saro. The accusations in here are horrible, and when I was up before, Mayor, I didn't hear a damn thing what you said, but I just want to make sure that you're not trying to twist any of my words. The only person I accuse of not telling the truth about Merrill Ains is you, Mayor, and you have a record of not telling the truth about a lot of things. So please, don't twist any of my words. I'd like to review some of the things that the mayor has said. I know Jim talked about it before. Calling members of the public a-holes, calling them dopey people with no lives, people that come here. Getting rid of Zoom, despite the fact that a veteran, who was a former councilman who was injured in his duties, asked that Zoom be held because even he had a problem making meetings sometime. And Andy Kaufman, etc., you take the ability away from them. These are just some of the things the mayor has done. And you know what? Enough about the mayor, but your cronies here on the council, Mayor, the four of them, Donna, the council president, Mike, John, and Sash, they sat here and let those things go on. So there is guilty, as everything that you've done. There every bit of guilty to allow that to happen. They're not real council people. They're fake council people. And I say that because of the councilmen, because I was here for real councilmen. I was here back when Harold Ains was a councilman, and Ray Presnell, and Eddie Dusko, and Pat Leavitt, and on and on and on to Wisniewski, and the people he served with, Kaberski, Kenny Buchanan. They would have never tolerated the things you're doing and holding secret government. They would have walked out, but they have no courage. I'm sure their families are really proud of them. Their parents, their children, their neighbors, I'm sure they're really proud of them, because the group of you are certainly disgusting people for trying to represent Saro. Oh, thank you so much for that. Yes, yeah, thank you. And you're smiling about it, Mike. You should be smiling about it. You should be walking out. You should be so embarrassed. And the resolution on the firehouse. You know, thank you, Barry, and thank you, Dan. This is not the first time that came up and you turned it down. And Mike here, and Sash, I remember their last time. They said, "Not yet. Not yet." Okay. When is it? When you suck all the money out of the borough. Is that what this is gonna be? When you suck every dime out of the borough, instead of trying to get grants. And all the ones you're saying that are in France, and the Board of Historic Society, you know, they're just apparently what the mayor says. They're a-holes and dopey people with no lives. They don't know anything, but you know everything. The only thing you've seen here in group is press releases, and when the mayor says speak, then you speak. I'm really proud of that group. That is disgusting thing. I've been to council meetings and going to them from when I was high school. Never have I seen anything like this. It's pathetic.
You want to leave the mic on the side?
I will leave the mic. Absolutely.
Just real quick, my chief of staff is a fellow by the name of Ken Kelly. He's a very respected and revered patriot, veteran, former commander of the VFW, a very distinguished retired police officer, and I have checked with him about if the veterans have any issues with the way I run a meeting and the way things are going in the borough, and he said absolutely not. They're very satisfied, according to the Veterans Alliance. That being said, young man, come on up. Please stick your name and address, please.
Is it on?
Yes.
I'm not in the president anymore.
Where do you live, sir?
Now I live in York.
Okay.
My name is Kenneth Chikala. Kenneth Chikala.
Okay. How can we help?
Well, first of all, struck a chord when you wrote about the speed limits. For thirty years, we've been trying to get. I was doing it with Bartinsky, okay, twenty years ago, because they're flying down past the high school at 45. It's the speed limit, and they're going seven. But nobody still did anything? You gotta be kidding me. But that's anyway. I'm glad I finally got to say something for that. I was a contractor here for fifteen years. Many of you I worked for, many of your family members, police officers, teachers, principals, anyway. Mayor, you were, you were mayor back in 2005, 2006, when there was a problem at the high school with the $47 million grant. And Jeffrey Bertram was your business administrator. And when I went to court for Matthew Imperato and Matthew, or Michael DeGenado, I got shoved down the stairs by Mr. Bertram. And I didn't know he was the boss then. But I received, I can't even begin to tell you in words, the retaliation since then, and what I've been through. Now, my ex-brother-in-law, Lieutenant Thomas Pavil, Jr., okay, there's no question, he has information about what I'm talking about, okay, because we were best friends. It was all pushed under the carpet by the BA. It don't go up to nobody because it all gets squashed, you know, former cops, okay? I'm the guy that you don't remember? A $12 million dispatch machine out of mine because of me, because all the dispatches got destroyed when they pulled me over after I filed an internal affairs complaint. Ruined my business, ruined my life and my kids. And your people could look at me, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. The corruption is gonna stop. I promise you, we are gonna get to the bottom of what happened with the high school. And the grandmoney, Bertram, was doing his dishing on his house. Down he was doing, it was ridiculous. That man shoved me, then put every detective he could, okay, Timmy Brandon, okay, Rusty Anderson. I got a pile of paperwork that I don't even go through anymore. But I wish I knew what I know now, because I would have been here first, because this board needed to know. They let a good citizen like myself, a soccer coach like Earl, we coached hand-to-hand together over some corrupt, I can only imagine what else you guys have done. Besides that, because I know it was the grandmoney, and the tournaments weren't ready. You know, we all know the story. Well, I knew too. I got told firsthand, because I was a builder here for fifteen years. I was one of the top three contractors in this town. Dynamic home improvements. I got thrown out. So what is to happen when the corruption is so deep, okay, that the boss of the town can do whatever the hell he wants, and there's no repercussions? Because that's what I went through over twenty years, and it still goes on till today. I'm trying to get internal affairs complaints for something that happened last week, not in this borough, but the communication, the correspondence. So I want to thank you for your services, because I know that this isn't all you do, but I also wanted to say thank you for your time. But understand that where, where do people that pay the bills here, where do people that pay you guys, pay the borough, our taxes? You know, and we're talking about the quote, the speed limit. I didn't even talk about my house, okay? After I stood up for Matthew Imperato, my house got hit by a truck, and my father got killed on his motorcycle in one week. You think that's not possible with a $47 million issue with this town, and that's just one issue? Come on, people killed for less. $200, who knows? Whatever. But anyway, I had tried to get the, get the speed limits on Pulaski, that are at 110 miles an hour. Jay Roberts, who knows who he was. I prayed to get an investigation into my father's death. That's my goal. I want it valid. Mr. Zabrowski knows well, well knows about orders. He was chief at the time. All I want is an investigation into my father's death, because it had to do with this borough. I don't know what happened with the girl that got shot. God rest her soul, but there's various stuff that has to be straightened out, and it can't be straightened out by the boss, who, Mr. Sorsinski, was my old neighbor. You were on North Edward, I don't know if you still are, and I was on Pulaski, right? I'm going. No Pavil, do you know me? When are we gonna find out what happened? Because this, I can tell you, is going to the DOJ. This is done. Finally, I know I have what I need.
I will stand by and defend the Saro Police Department. I found, in the twenty-two years that I've been there, and three years as a councilman before that, that they provide exemplary service, that they certainly take an oath to serve and protect the people of Saro. For every, for every note of criticism that I have ever received about Saro Police, I've received hundreds of notes of compliments. That being said, we are exceeding your time limit, but as I say to people, whether you have issues with me or anything else in the borough, if you feel that something is out of whack or has been done illegally, go right to the prosecutor in your Brunswick, and that would be my recommendation to you.
Yeah, we...
Negotiate the prosecutor.
Yeah, all right.
But I will stand, I will stand by the Saro Police Department.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other? Yes, Tom?
Thank you. Again, Tom Fritz and 143 Main Street, Saro. I have a couple of things. One of the things I noticed a couple of days ago while I was walking down Main Street, that the old hardware store is supposedly being rented out and being whacked up into like five or six different little stores. Is, I may have related the game on this. Is that true, or?
Jay, do you have any knowledge on that?
Mayor, I'm not aware. There haven't been any applications submitted to the boards for improvements to those buildings. I'm assuming that if they are making improvements, it's being done just through the building department and the zoning office, and it must be permitted by code.
Yeah, because my concern is parking. There's no place to park on Main Street. There's houses, there's businesses, no place to park. And if you're gonna put seven or eight different stores there, like little mini-stores or something like that, parking is gonna be like a treacherous on Main Street. Also, too, I, on the Main Street also, I know, was talking to the sergeant about, the traffic sergeant, about putting lines on the street, parking lines, because there's no, you know, some people park across my driveway because they don't see a line, or they're not really parking, or you see a big gap between cars, and two, other cars were switched together. If we could space out the cars, you might get a little bit more parking spacing and stuff like that.
I haven't looked into that.
Yeah. And I also know that somebody sent me a letter a couple of months ago about revitalizing downtown Main Street. And I called, and I said I was interested, and they said, "Oh, we're not doing that now. We'll call you," I think in May, and we're in May. I don't know if there's anybody gonna give a call.
I can only address that through Saro, the Saro Economic Free Development Agency. You received that letter from our executive director. In fact, about two weeks ago, we had several meetings with residents who had responded to that request to explain more about the ideas that Saro had for improving the downtown area. If you're interested, Tom, I'll, if you could reach out, I'll have our executive director put together an opportunity for you to meet, and we can show you the presentation as well as get your input as well.
Okay, because I did that.
Did I apologize? We'll make sure that...
And I got the letter. I live on Main Street, so I wanted to make sure I was kind of involved in all of that stuff. I said to, I talked to somebody on the phone, and they said, "Okay, we'll put your name down." They took my number, and they said, "We'll get back to you when we're actually gonna start doing this. We're not doing it yet." And I haven't heard anything how you're saying you're already happy, so...
We did, but we'd be happy to have you come in and talk.
Okay. Oh, and the last thing, this is just kind of informational. I was here a couple of weeks ago when we did the Operation Snowcome. The Main Street Theater Company, which got its roots here in Saro, we're now over in Holbridge. We participated. We had some of the readings, some of our actors come over and read the letters. The person that wrote the actual story, Chris, Chris, I believe her name is, found all the letters, talked to two of our members, and we're going to expand on the letters to make it a more viable play, or even possibly musical, because we're hoping somebody can make it musical. So we're gonna try to hopefully expand on that for the Historical Society, and maybe something we can roll out every memorial there or something. They're very interested.
Thank you, Tom.
It was a very good, very good program. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any other questions or comments? Frank?
Frank Turzino, Canal Street, President of Saro Historical Society. Mike, thanks for those kind words, and Mike, thank you.
Frank, you need to mention yourself.
I did.
That's a, that's a terrible mic.
Yeah, he's a terrible mic. We had trouble with him.
Yeah. All right, go ahead.
I try to hear.
Let your show, Frank Turzino, Town Historian.
32 Canal, 32 Canal Street, President of Saro Historical Society. Thanks, Mike, for your kind words, and Tom, and Jay. That's the first I've heard about what's going on up there. "So I'm not here to beat a dead horse. I'd rather see a gal to the finish line." Yes, I'm referring to the first town hall built in 1909. "I understand that some governing bodies are totally against revitalizing this historic landmark for reasons unknown to anyone on this side of the podium. Over a year ago, this saga started. Unfortunately, it turned into a Cold War with a touch of animosity. Emotions ran high, and things went out of control and off the rails. There's been a terrible ordeal with heated debates and unsold conduct. I personally had to seek help and wound up being under doctor's care. This situation has harmed my health to this day. As a volunteer for almost forty years in a variety of positions, I feel a little disrespect. I believe I'm on the black list for something I did. When tasked with responsibility, I give 100% plus. I jumped in with both feet, and I will not apologize for doing my best at any task. I understand this project is overwhelming, complex, to say the least, but there's no reason why the Historical Society has not bitten a loop, as expressed to the governing bodies several times. At this point in time, as leaders of the community and the Historical Society, we need to sit down and talk like real people do. I live by the motto, "The mission comes first." We're asking again to sit down one-on-one, a group. We must talk here for ten minutes, discuss a roadmap, timeframes. I'm in no hurry. I'm not pushing, pushing time. Stages, what the stages are. We talked about building inside. We need to force some kind of teamwork or committee together. We need a sense of community. We don't need a sense of being the black sheep of the community. I'm available almost anytime, day or night. I cannot harass and constantly bother you guys, hoping someone wouldn't step up, as of today, the most I heard is from Jay earlier. I stayed in my email while I personally donated storage bids to help pack ROTC, Coast Guard items, and other entities that service that... ROTC, Coast Guard items, and other entities that service that building over the years. If needed, we can put a small army together and help clean. Uh, there are historic artifacts, artifacts the society needs to preserve, these items should not be trashed, I was promised that we would be able to enter the building for those items before construction, and I'm pretty sure that's going to happen, but Kristen told me. I just want to make sure there's not a midnight cleanup on the horizon there. Our membership residents and business owners are constantly asking, texting, texting and calling us, what's going on with the firehouse? The status of the governing body doesn't look good for anyone. As far as satisfactory inspection done by CME, there were a few items on that list we feel we could save some money and preserve a natural setting. Let's work together, and let's, let's go to a ribbon cutting, if I see a ribbon cutting, and we're all going to have a drink together, that's how I see it. We're a community, we should stay a community. Uh, other than that, uh, the Snow Cone project we had on the third, um, we had over a hundred sixty people, that was a total success, and it was very memorial, uh, memorial, and it was, it was heart-wrenching. If you want to see it, there was a YouTube video, Saro Historical Society Preservation presents Snow, Operation Snow Cone, yeah, Saro Historical Society presents Operation Snow Cone.
Fifteen seconds, Frank.
Okay. On May seventeenth is History Day in Piscataway, we definitely need to make contact with other societies, uh, they can put on a good show, revolutionary soldiers, they can fire it and there's food, it's a good family day, Memorial Day, we're ready for that. Saro Mansion, tea and tour is a bus trip, uh, and contact, the number's on the Saro page. So I look forward to working together, and let's do this together, I mean.
Thank you, Frank.
I'm going to go.
Go ahead.
We're finally. We're finally at the point where we can get you into the building to remove whatever artifacts that you deem necessary, including, I'm sure, the original wooden honor roll for the poor veterans, which is in the basement. Contact me during the week, we'll make arrangements so you can get assembled a crew from the historical society, do your search, remove whatever it is that you deem necessary. And lastly, with regard to the firehouse project, now that the architect and the engineer are close to completing their plans as far as the structural and rehabilitation of the building, the historical society will be having a meeting with the architect in order to offer their opinions and guidance in terms of what, what aspects of historical nature need to be included in the building's renovation.
Fantastic, thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, Glenn, I appreciate that.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? I think no other questions or comments.
Mayor, I just, I just want to make one comment if I can. Uh, I want to clarify the issue as far as the range is concerned, because I don't want any misunderstandings as far as that non-vote is concerned, at least as far as the way as I'm concerned. Uh, that, that range was built exclusively for the use of the Saro Police Department, and it was built for that purpose. Overutilizing that over time is going to deteriorate the area, and over saturate, over saturate the area. The one thing I want to make sure is that we protect that range and that building so that our officers have the best training facility that they can possibly have. Several years ago, we spearheaded the opportunity to build a permanent building there, not for the use of any other agency, but for the use of our officers. The best way to make sure that our community has the quiet enjoyment of the range, or the quiet enjoyment of the community, is to make sure that that range is minimized, use of that is minimized for the officers of the Saro Police Department, to make sure that they have full access at all time, and to make sure that they can do the training that's appropriate. So I don't want anyone to misconstrue that we don't want to build the wall, we don't want to do noise cancellation, that wasn't the vote. The fact that we decided not to continue the MOU, or any other MOU, for the purposes of other agencies coming in, was for those two purposes, the quiet enjoyment of our community, and to ensure that our police officers have the best facility, and it continues to be the best facility for them throughout the use of the range.
Donna, did you have any questions?
Do you want to name South River?
Okay.
Right here down across the river.
With that, I'll take a motion to close the public portion, and a motion for a chairman.
I make a motion to close the public, and, sure. Okay, I make a motion to close the public.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, everyone.